Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. And today's meeting is a meeting so that the council will talk to the developers. Have been asked some questions to come before the different city council and to discuss some questions that we have. Each developer will be given approximately one hour of time to give us their presentation. The council members have had some concerns, they've asked some questions, and during this time they'll answer the questions that we've asked. This is not an open meeting like a council meeting. Anybody other than the council people or administrative people from the city will not be allowed to ask any questions. This is not a, this is a open meeting that's just for the council's review of the project. To the council members and to the administration people, please don't ask questions while you're, while the people are talking. They'll come up here, they'll give us a presentation when they're talking. If you've got some questions you want to ask them at the end of the thing, write them down and ask the questions later. We want to try to get this thing and handle it as in order and give everybody the right opportunity to have some que, have the feeling of what's going to happen and get some ideas on what could be developed on this project and hear the pros and cons to what some of these things are. If some of the people from, there are some people I noticed from some neighborhood groups, if they have some things that they want to discuss after the meeting, please talk to a council person. Don't talk to a developer because it's not fair to them to talk to them. Talk to somebody in the city administration or a council person if you have any questions. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Peter Kay and maybe he can get us started here. The Community Improvement Director for the City of Dearborn.
Thank you, Council President. And council members and mayor for being here this morning. Thanks also to the developers who are here, who have all spent a great deal of time and effort on the project. Council President Kenop covered the basic format of the meeting as we have designed it. I think everyone knows where Super Block is. What we are, what we now have to determine is the elected officials have to determine what Super Block is going to be. And I think from the inception of this project, the council and the mayor have to foresight to understand the importance of continual reinvestment in the city and the importance and necessity of revitalization throughout the city. I think with that in mind, the Super Block began to, with three main purposes in mind that I've been able to determine from reading the history of the project here. One purpose was to arrest and reverse the declining building stock and tax base throughout the whole city, most specifically in this particular case in the, in that area of the west part of the city. Also, the project was intended to increase the housing stock and living choices, particularly on the upper end for apartment or in-city type dwelling units. And thirdly, to be a catalyst for maintaining and upgrading the quality throughout the west side of the city. It's a project that would have enough impact and magnitude to make a statement, to be a catalyst, to encourage further redevelopment throughout the western part of Dearborn. The purpose of the meeting this morning, as Council President Kenop has stated, is this is one step in the administrative review process. At this point in time, it makes sense to allow the developers who remain with us, who have made presentations or have ideas for the Super Block site, to allow them a chance to present their ideas and their thoughts to the council from a developer's perspective, particularly what they feel from the development side or the private sector side, what is feasible, particularly what is financially feasible, because we can have whatever ideas we'd like to see or not like to see on the site, but the bottom line is if it does not make financial sense, if it is not financially feasible, obviously it won't be built, no matter what it is. So, at this point in time, it's appropriate to hear from the private sector side what they feel is feasible and perhaps explain why it is they designed what they have designed. This is, Council President says it's an informational meeting. The developers have been presented with written questions that were formulated by the elected officials and sent to them some time ago so that they would have a chance to respond in some depth to those questions, and that's what our intention is this morning. Format of the meeting, as was mentioned, we have three development companies here this morning. Each company will be given one hour to make their presentation, probably the first half or so to make a presentation and then during the second part of it to address the written questions that they've been forwarded. The schedule is, and there is a, the sign-in sheet is being circulated, I wish everybody would sign it, there is, there are agendas for this meeting, I'll pile them up here. If anyone needs one, let me know and we'll pass them back. First company we will hear from is A.S. Brown Development Company. That will be followed by Aparment Stein Company, and then lastly, the Demery Company. So with that, I assume there are representatives from all three of the development firms here. With that, I'd like to begin this, it's 9:15, so if Mr. Brown, if you'd like to have the floor, it is yours.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Anthony Brown, President of Anthony Brown Development Company. And before talking a little bit about the Super Block and our ideas relative to it, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our company. We are a full-service real estate development management company with a portfolio of approximately $400 million. Our developments include retail, mixed use, office, and residential. We have been in business for 15 years and have been developing and active in the Dearborn area for seven years. Our expertise include financing, land acquisition, planning, development, construction, leasing, and the day-to-day management of properties. Approximately seven years ago, we came to the Dearborn market and with the acquisition of Spring Wells Apartments and the small shopping center on the corner of Greenfield and Rotunda. The, that development, and this is a photo of the, of the, part of the shopping center that was, that we added on to, was part of the Spring Wells Association and not one of the most beloved members. I can remember our second or third meeting with the association and the homeowners, and they were very distraught as to how the 300 apartment units and shopping center had interacted with the Spring Wells community. The, we acquired the center and over a period of a year and a half renovated the entire apartment project. I believe we won two awards in the City of Dearborn and certainly made friends with the entire Spring Wells Association. At that time, we also learned that Dearborn was a wonderful place to build, to develop, and to the extent that one was able to develop something special, the neighbors and the environment would reward the developer with high occupancy and good rental rates. About four years ago, I was approached by a friend, Frank Monahan, and I think a friend of many of the people here, in regard to the Adams School, which had for several years been vacant and people were putting proposals together and trying to figure what type of development could be put on that square block. And I came in and looked at the school, met with some of the people in the city, the retailers, I believe I met with one or two of the council people, and came to the conclusion that West Dearborn was in fact a very special place and that there was a commitment by the residents, by the retailers, and by the city administration to make it, to redevelop it and make it a very special environment to work, to live, and to shop. With that in mind, we took a site that from real estate standards would be considered probably a C-minus site. It wasn't on a main street, it's a block off Michigan Avenue, as you all know. No other office buildings had really successfully been developed in the market. The only thing that was really there that one could see was a community that, that wanted to grow, wanted to be special, wanted to be a place where people could, to come together and live, as I said, and work and shop. And the, it was intriguing to me, the school, as we all know, was very, very special, and we took on the assignment. Three years later, it's been completed. It includes both the Dearborn atrium and Salisbury Schools totaling 160,000 square feet. Hobson Black are architects on this project, were the architects on the atrium and Salisbury Schools. In front, favorite, here it is. And I'm proud to say that the, that we have completed the development successfully and that it is 100% leased. I believe that this development, along with, with the support of you and the residents and the retail community, was the catalyst for the thought of the Super Block. And with that in mind, and with my strong feelings about this section of Dearborn, we were very excited about putting together a proposal for the Super Block. There is, there seems to be a lot of discussion as to, as to what the Super Block or what this area is all about, and we'll find that out sometime in the future, I'm sure, but I think that we all agree that it should be a special place, it should be an environment where people get together, they can walk at night, they feel comfortable living and working in and going to, and all the ingredients are there. There's great architecture there already, there are golf courses, there are parks, and there are people who care. So, we're, we're very excited about being able to offer our proposal to you, and part of our group that's here are Hobson Black, Richard Black, Dan Johnson from Ann Arbor, and the gentleman that'll start it off is the Vice President and Head of Development of our company, Andy Jovanetti. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. What I'd like to do in our brief presentation today is just run through the key points of our proposal, which I'm sure that everybody on the council has reviewed, and I know staff has reviewed and we've had various meetings on it. And briefly, just organizationally, reiterate a little bit what Tony Brown indicated. I think one of the strengths and one of the request proposal, I think one of the strengths of the company is our ability to proceed with the project on a turnkey basis with internal staff. The only outside consultants and professionals that we typically hire are architectural firm, which varies by project, we try to pick that firm, which is most representative of the project that we are developing, and our contractor. Typically, we bid a job out after we have plans and specifications to ensure that we get the best price for the, our project. But internally, we take care of everything from land acquisition to project feasibility, which is within my department, to overall development, base building construction, to financing, both in terms of equity and debt, taking care of the leasing of the properties as we've done at Dearborn Atrium Salisbury with Susan Gans, who's the head of our leasing department, and our property management. Our staff is approximately 36 people within the development and financing end, and the management staff obviously has hundreds of people with a core of about 35 to 40. So we believe that's an important characteristic in doing a project of this scale. Project site, as we all know, is approximately 80,000 square feet on Michigan Avenue abutting the Jacobson apartment store, and that's primarily what we will be discussing today. I do point out, though, that in the proposal, request proposals, we also talked, the city also talked about a future development site and the necessity perhaps of structured parking to the rear. And I think one of the key elements of our proposal is that we attempt to address not only the site-specific requirements of the development site, in other words, the densities, the heights, and the type of activities that will be there, but we also want to address how it will impact the surrounding area and act as a catalyst for future development. Just to reiterate what Peter Kay indicated earlier, because I think this is very important. When a request proposal is, is sent out, developer typically identifies what he believes to be the most important aspects or criteria and benefits that, that the requesting party has asked for. And we've kind of summarized them into four, these four bullets. The first one, obviously, is, I think the City of Dearborn has insisted in its request proposal and all follow-up meetings that one has a high-quality development of mixed use. We think we've demonstrated that by our projects at Dearborn Atrium, as well as many other projects that we have, we have dealt with, which again was in the report that we indicated to you. Another goal of the RFP was to establish a higher-density urban setting in West Dearborn. Now what does that mean? I don't, I don't think that anyone can, can define that higher density or urban setting is directly correlated to a specific height, okay, density or anything else. I think what it means is developing a total package which will attract not just retail customers, office people, or people that live there, but will attract the entire community to a particular location. So it has to be dramatic enough in terms of what kind of activities it does have, okay, to meet that goal. We've also talked about the ambience, and that's a quote, "to encourage other developments in the area." Again, it has to be strong enough to want other people to develop there, and ultimately what the City of Dearborn wanted to do was the high-quality development, increase tax revenues, and want to bring people into the city. And I think you have to keep these goals in mind when both our firm and other developers are making their proposals today, because that to me is, is the criteria upon which we think we should be judged. In order to accomplish those goals, we conducted our own market analysis. We've also reviewed the city's market analysis, and we proposed a low to high range, or Alternatives A and Alternative B. And basically, in the Alternative A, which is the upside proposal of our, of our development proposal, we suggested that commercial should be approximately 110,000 square feet, office about 103,000 square feet, and we believe that residential with the right financing and other characteristics could attain 192 residential apartment units. To serve these needs, we estimated approximately 1,173 parking spaces, and we believe that there was an importance to having some of these spaces onsite, and by onsite I mean on that 80,000 square foot site along Michigan Avenue, to support the residential component of the development. On the low side, we projected 140,000 square feet of office and retail with the residential cut in half, and the parking obviously would be reduced from that point. If you look at the previous information that the city staff prepared on marketing information, for the most part, I think we're fairly consistent with the marketing projections. We somewhat agree, we pretty much agree with the marketing projections. In our pro formas, which are contained in our, in the detailed report, we've adjusted some things such as construction costs, rents, expenses, and things of that nature based on our own past experience. We have not, however, attempted to second-guess the city's projections in, in revenues or expenses or costs for off-site utilities or parking garages or things of that nature. But we, this is based on what we believe will work and is pretty much representative of, of the range of our proposal. Now what I'd like to do at this point is have Richard Black from Hobson Black take a few minutes to, to run through the architectural portion of the project.
Well, I, Richard Black from Hobson Black, associates in Ann Arbor. If you bear with me, I have a slight cold, so I can't project as well as the two other speakers, but I'll try to go through it. We're, we're involved in this project because, only because we have a relationship with Tony and we respect their development work, but we have a specific or special interest in, in downtowns. I'm a lover of downtowns. I think that since World War II, many of our downtowns have changed, and there's been an exodus to the suburbs, satellite housing and malls, regional malls, have really begun to destroy or drain our downtowns, and I don't have to tell you this because while you're not alone, it really led to this kind of proposal. A lot of communities in the state are living with boarded-up storefronts and no people in the downtown area. So that when we approached this, we approached it with the, answering the RFP with, with what is the maximum good, economic good we can do on the site in terms of numbers of units to bring more people downtown to shop, to work, and to live. And this particular proposal, or the illustrations, really illustrate what Andy referred to as Proposal A, which is the largest we see this development occurring. But I would like to emphasize that this is simply an illustration. It's a proposal that we put on, we put forth to illustrate a level of competence and a degree of sensitivity in terms of handling the site and a level of refinement of the development team. The development team's thoughts, but they don't really include the input from the community and from the city. I have to illustrate that we're, we're fully prepared, we realize that we have to be flexible, we realize that, that the city would be, will become a part of our team if we're fortunate enough to be selected to develop your site, and that we will in fact negotiate and develop a solution together. So this solution is not the solution, is obviously not the solution that would be built on that site. It's simply an illustration to show a competence level of the development team. As Andy referred to, we're prepared to be flexible to, to the point where it doesn't make any economic sense. This is the highest building and the most development that we would put on the site. With that, let me go through some of the considerations. We feel that in order to strengthen the shopping or the commercial marketplace, that we were, we were approaching the first two, three levels of this site as a commercial mall. With a, it's difficult to see here, but with a setback and a garden and people space along the front or along Michigan Avenue, the setback of which is almost as deep as the entire Jacobson store. So that there is visual relief, planning, now this should be designed, we showed a fountain there. Obviously, that's flexible. If the community wants more space in the foreground, and if, and if we can still live with the economics of less commercial space, then the park gets bigger and the commercial gets smaller. So we, we have to go through that exercise and develop this together. We felt strongly that, as in many communities, getting more people to live in the downtown community and directly feed the existing commercial as well as the new commercial so that you have an economic unit there that lives there, we felt strongly that, that we should have housing. So we were proposing 192 condominium units. Now, if we have 100, it's less height but less economic purchasing power, so that the community has to measure that and make a decision with the developer as to, as to how much density is on this site. This could also take many other forms. We're showing it, showing it on Michigan Avenue as a tower that comes out of a very horizontal form, which is the commercial area. This tower could be turned so that it has less impact on Michigan Avenue. It could be built straddling the parking and the commercial so it has less visibility from Michigan Avenue and from the community. It could be lower, lots of things could happen, but we're talking about somewhere between 100 and 192 units in terms of density. The office building is 100,000 square feet and is, and is smaller in terms, in terms of height, and we're located a parking structure with a maximum of 1,000 cars on the land immediately, immediately south of the project. We envision an internal mall system that would, that would cause people to walk past the commercial, people walking through the commercial areas so that Jacobsons could be fed by the parking, by the new parking structures through this mall, and so the future development or the possibility of future development could also be fed with a bridge linkage across Michigan Avenue. So that there is direct connection between parking, between where people shop, where they live, where they work, and, and we're connecting other areas where they now shop, such as Jacobson's. This board shows that offset somewhat better. Obviously, there's a practical dimension in terms of a commercial store depth. If we push this over too far, then we become a single-loaded area in terms of the mall. That's why we arrived at this, but this is a significant amount of open space. Again, these are only illustrations that we're measuring the economic issues here, and we believe that, we always believe that, that the question of height and ultimate density would be subject to future negotiations. There are practical limits for residential areas in terms of the unit sizes, circulation, and how many it makes sense to deal with on a per-floor basis. We're showing a residential tower that we think makes economic sense. It doesn't make economic sense to narrow the tower to four units per, per floor. We have some 12 units per floor, which means if we're dealing with a, with a 192 units, we, we have 18 stories in terms of height. The section, the concept is to have parking below this project, which would feed the housing because of the safety issues and the directness. We feel we have to park for the housing directly under the residential. We have the two levels of commercial, the top level of which would be part of the circulation system from the parking decks behind, the future bridge crossing or connector across Michigan Avenue, and a store connector directly to Jacobson's. So that we have a people movement space and we have places where people work and where The materials that we have talked about, again, are, we stress flexibility. This is not designed yet. We are looking for community input. We would work with council to arrive at something that's, that's the best, the best solution for us and for the community. But we would be talking about, we're suggesting a limestone solution which is like your city hall with brick and with glass. We look at the, at this horizontal shopping area as being sort of an extension of the existing commercial and then having some residential and office units come out of that. If we set them back further, we see less of them, and it depends upon how much of a statement you want to make. We do have a section, since I've just shown those diagrams, we do have a section through what we would consider to be, this is the solution that I just illustrated, which, which we would consider this to be the maximum height and the maximum density that we would see this sort, this, this site holding. The second section- The second section shows the minimum density that the Anthony Brown Company considers to be economically feasible. That doesn't mean that it has to be this high because we can redistribute, we can push things back, we can rearrange. This is a more horizontal solution with less coming out of it. But this does show the bulk that represents that economic density that would pay the community back for the site. And we're willing to work within this range. We're willing to work with the community, and we're, we feel we've demonstrated that we can do that by taking the old Adams School and turning it into something that's economically viable and something that fits within your community. We, as architects, have encountered similar projects in Ann Arbor and Kalamazoo and we're East Lansing, and we're looking at projects in Jackson and at other downtown communities. I feel that there's a movement. You're not alone in terms of your problem. Many communities are looking for ways of restructuring their downtown and competing with the suburban malls, and we want to be a part of that, and we'd like to be a part of it in Dearborn. Thank you.
What I'd like to do at this time is, is go over the economics and schedule that we believe would work. Prior to doing that, I just want to come right back to one of the slides that Richard just put up there. I think it's important to note that any mixed-use development of this side, of this scope is a complex project. It's quite different than building a strip center of 50,000 square feet or 30,000 square foot or just building a 100-unit apartment building. What you're attempting to do in this kind of a project is make everything work with each other and complement each other. Economically, from a construction standpoint, your cost of construction for your commercial, your retail, and your residential is comparable on a square foot basis, we believe, in order to develop high-quality office, residential, and retail space. What happens, however, is the residential portion, which costs the same, doesn't result in the same amount of rent on a square footage basis as retail and commercial. So consequently, as we will see when we get into projections, what happens is part of the office and the retail carries and underwrites some of the residential. Another thing the residential does, you also note that the residential is what represents the highest component of the project, not the office or the retail. This is especially evident when you go to the smaller version that we proposed, where if you look at the office and the retail, you're talking about a combined six-story structure, which after going through, over the last few days, a revised economic projection and, and, and marketing scheme, we really don't believe it makes economic sense to develop a project at this size that would meet your goals, that would be less than five or six stories. We don't believe you can meet the stringent goals and objectives that the city of Dearborn has placed on a super block in terms of it being a focal point and catalyst unless you, you have the ability to generate at least a five or six-story structure. As Richard did indicate, we believed initially that it was a much more pleasant environment to have a twin-tower arrangement. It gives more light to the residential component, it gives more light to the office component, it's a much more pleasant environment to work in. Obviously, if one starts widening the base up to a limit, one could bring down the height. In terms of what it takes to make this project work, we put together a summary of what we consider is a reasonable implementation strategy, broken into five components, site acquisitions being number one. City of Dearborn has acquired the property, and again, we're talking about the 80,000 square foot property of Buddy and Michigan Avenue, and we believe if it's contributed to the development, that based on the densities that are permitted, we could repay the city of Dearborn up to $2 million for that piece of property. Site improvements, we believe that off-site and parking improvements would be the responsibility of the city of Dearborn. What we would do to complement that or assist in the repayment of those bonds necessary for that is to enter into long-term leases for office and retail employees. Retail and office, that's 100% our responsibility, and we would build up to 214,000 square feet of office and retail space, again, depending on final negotiations with the city of Dearborn. As I stated earlier, while retail and office cost the same to bill as apartments, apartments only generate 2/3rds of revenue. And because of that, we believe it's necessary in order to keep it affordable and rentable, we've estimated a market rent of about $800 per month, which right now, we believe is pushing the limits of rentals in the air, but if you deliver a high-quality product in this environment, we think it will work. In order to obtain that, it is necessary to have affordable property taxes on the apartment units. Notice, you know, whatever's fair in the retail and office, we're willing to live with, but we believe it's very important that the property taxes be affordable on the residential component. We also believe that there has to be some mechanism that the developer, the city, possibly the state, get involved in to try to work out a program for below-market financing. In order to accomplish this, we believe that if a final development agreement was negotiated with city staff by March 1, which is I believe the date that the RFP has indicated, that in going through the development of conceptual architectural engineering plans, which is a couple of months, months to accomplish, and submission to the city planning department and board for approvals, we would probably be looking at start of construction by the beginning of 1989. And depending on the scope of the project, again, using our assumptions for the maximum development, we believe it's no more than an 18-month build-out from that point. Obviously, if you go back to our alternative B, which is the smaller of the developments, perhaps we could pick up some time on that. What I'd like to do at this time is bring back Tony Brown to summarize where we're at. We have, we will be more than happy to answer the questions and be specific as to the questions that the councilman did write. We believe we answered some of them in the presentation, and we'll then open it up to questions and answers.
Thank you, Andy. The, in summary, the, the development that you choose for the super block is only the first development in the beginning of the redevelopment of this area. So when choosing a development and a developer, it's very important that you set a high standard and a, remember that this will be the focal point of new residential, of new commercial, and new office development in this area. And, and the environment that I believe, through my discussions with, with people who live and work in this area, is to create this environment that people enjoy living, working, and shopping. One of the most pleasant experiences I had, looking at other cities in this country, was going to Kansas City. And there is an area in Kansas City called the Plaza Area that was developed in the '20s. And it's, it was a very exciting place to, to walk and to shop and to eat, and the parks were wonderful. And I really believe that there is an equal opportunity here in West Dearborn, and I think that you have the opportunity to create something very special for the state of Michigan, something that isn't anywhere else here. And it's an obligation that you have to yourselves. When we're all gone, the developments that are created in this area will still be standing. So that we all have an obligation to our children and to their children to create something that's special. And you have taken the initiative by acquiring this first site for a lot of money and tearing down the buildings. We hope to be part of this future development, and, and if treated properly and if we all focus on what's important here, something very special will be developed. The one other thing that I'd like to show you and that we haven't, urban development, I think, and management is a, is a, is a very special thing. That's the reason we chose Richard Black from Hobbs and Black as the architect. And we've had several experiences in the metropolitan Detroit area and Lansing doing developments, and I think that they'll show a little bit of our expertise and, and the length that we're willing to go through and the detail that we're willing and the, to go through and the time that we're willing to commit to in order to create this type of development. This was a development that we did in Birmingham approximately five years ago. It's called the Barclay Inn. When we purchased it, it was a motel called the Birmingham House Motel, $29 a room and right in the center of Birmingham. And today, it's achieved a prominence in the, in the Oakland County area and has very special meaning to a lot of people, and it's where they choose to stay whenever they come This is a photo, or two photos, of buildings that we completed about four years ago in Birmingham called Brown Street Center. These buildings, when we were, when we went in for planning, we were allowed to build on this site 100,000 square foot of office. Instead, we chose to develop only 75% of the potential of the site, and we developed some walkways and European-style setting, parks and within the development that made it very special and have created a catalyst for other developments in the city of Birmingham by others that are consistent with this type of development. So it's not always our goal to maximize the site. Our goal is to do something that works for the development itself and for the community, and I, and I think this is a prime example of achieving that. The building that we just completed in Birmingham, which is right across the street, was a limestone building that I believe is just totally unique. It's, it's only 52,000 feet, but because of the pressure of parking in the area, we, in addition to the building, we built 100-car parking underneath. And the amount of time and detail and the planning and design of this building by the architect and by our staff, I think that over 200 elevations were done until we found something that we were all happy with. Sensitivity to, to the past is very important, and the, two of the developments, and I think there are two of probably 15 or 18 that we've done in the state of Michigan, were the old Edison Station in the middle of Birmingham, which is now 220 Merrill Street Restaurant and Offices, and it's beautiful Tudor architecture that we were able to add to and preserve, and the former Birmingham Train Station, which had been vacant for many years and has been developed into Norman's Eaton Street Station. And again, it's important, in this area, there are some, just some wonderful architecture, and it's important that whatever is developed here is, is consistent with that architecture and works with it. And I think that we've shown, both in the Adams School and the Salisbury School, that we're sensitive to those types of things and that you can create the new and maintain the old and have them work together, and I like the reflection off of the atrium of the Salisbury School, and I think it's real special. And again, a little, this was a redevelopment of the Wabick Building in Birmingham, and it's a reflection of a combination of office and, and retail. And I, and I think this is, starts to, to take on the types of things that, that we're talking about in the super block, which is a mixed-use project, adding residential to retail and to office. If there are questions and we can answer them, we'd be delighted to do so.
Councilman, you're here. Yeah, Mr. Brown, we're looking at, I'm sure you predicted, what are we looking at, $50 million?
It, it really depends, Councilman, on the, on the size of the development. If, if we were to maximize this development, you are talking somewhere in the 40 to 50 million dollar range.
And I, in your sketches I saw in your slides, underground parking or deck parking? I didn't get.
There's both.
Both of them?
The underground parking is for the residential in the, within the development. The deck parking across Newman would be for the office, and, and it would be connected, you know, walkway for the retail and office.
Yeah, I caught that, but I couldn't make it up.
Here's the parking structure.
And as far as financing, you're all set?
No.
Not set, but I mean you would be.
We, you know, the, when we built 160,000 square feet that were, that was the atrium, at that point in time, there were, there were a lot more obstacles in the way of financing in this area than there are today. I don't see any difficulty in us in obtaining financing for this development.
Thank you.
Councilman, you're very interesting. Mr. Brown, you're talking about the largest, if you fully developed the site, you said 40 or 50 million dollars. What would it, if you minimize the development of the site, what would that project cost?
You would probably cut it in half.
20 to 25, right?
Probably.
Okay. The park, you say that in terms of the city having to provide something, the parking garage, we're talking about 5,000 parkings for 5,000 vehicles. What, about how much do you figure a parking deck like that would cost?
The, in terms of the parking garage, we utilized the projections offered in this, by the city's marketing report, and we inflated them for 1989 construction as opposed to, at the time that they were completed. And for the minimum scenario, let's break this down here for you. For the minimum scenario, or for the maximum scenario, you were probably looking at, for parking alone, approximately $7 million, seven and a half million dollars. Now, to that, you have to add your soft cost, which I believe were projected at 28% and some other items, but for parking alone, that's what was projected for the maximum scenario. And for the minimum scenario, and that, that was about 1,170 spaces. For the minimum scenario, which we calculated around 730 spaces, the parking alone for construction was estimated at about $4.5 million. And again, in, in these scenarios, underground parking was assumed for the residential component because we believe that the security issue of the residential was important to be in the same area. Obviously, if the decision was made to eliminate underground parking, one could save approximately 700,000 or 800,000 on your minimum scenario.
The property tax considerations that you were talking about, that, in other words, you're expecting, you would like the city to do what? What is that going to cost us? I'm trying to put this together in a package to look at.
I don't, I don't think it's going to cost the city anything. I think what we're trying to point out at this time, because I, I think it's our belief to put everything on the table now as opposed to generating surprises later. As opposed to generating surprises later, is that if, we believe that, that the rentals in Dearborn could be approximately $100 a month, okay, for, for two-bedroom units, which again, was pretty consistent to what city projections have been. In order to accomplish that in, in such a high-rise development, we believe that one of the items, one of the one of the costs that has to be plugged in, if you may, is about $700 to $800 a year for property taxes per each unit. So, you know, we're not, I don't know what the city is going to assess it at. We're just trying to be sensitive to that issue now and put on the table that in order to accommodate that kind of rental rate, which we believe is doable, that's what we've estimated as the maximum affordable property tax.
The low-market financing part of it, that's what the city is going to do, what to provide below-market financing.
We're asking that the city assist the developer in procuring any and all sources of below-market financing that might be available. And again, we're trying to point out that in order to achieve market apartments, market rental apartments in a downtown area, we believe you have to do better than conventional rates.
How will we do that?
Well, I don't know the exact answers on that. I, you know, that, that's something.
This will cost us some money, this will cost somebody some money.
May not. There may be a tax-free bond issue that might be available, which will be repaid.
That doesn't cost anybody anything.
Based on, we've done bond issues for office buildings that are below-market and it's a question of developer paying points just like you would at any other conventional financing. But in order for market rentals to work, there has to be some type of market assistance.
I'd like to ask, and this is a question I intend to ask all the developers, but I just heard this around and I just want to ask the question, just to clear my own self. Mr. Brown, you or any members of your team, have you ever provided any elected officials with any gifts or trips or any senior officials?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. You know, you saw our market study, the market study that we had done.
Yes.
Do you, have you found that useful or do you intend to have to do another one of your own?
Well, as I stated earlier, and we stated in support, I believe, but I'll be more specific. We did, we completed our own market analysis for the retail and office for the building. We have a fair amount of experience in Dearborn and surrounding areas in retail and office, and we did complete our own. And our numbers are based on our projections. They happened to work. We believe that they're consistent with your projections. The only component that we did not reevaluate, okay, in terms of cost, was that of the construction cost of the parking garages and off-site improvements, which we weren't privy yet at this point to get into, you know, and indicate availability of utilities. We're assuming that as a given. So we utilized the construction cost of the city parking garage and offsites as a given. We inflated them, inflated the numbers. We utilized the projected revenues, I think of $2.50 per turnover of the retail. We utilized, I believe it was 40 or 45 dollars a month for apartment parking for office. We use that information as a given, but in terms of the apartments, retail, office, those construction numbers are 100% ours and the rates are 100% ours.
Could I ask you about lease negotiations? How do you, if you were to secure this project, how, I mean, would you do, have you lined up anybody?
Well, let me say this, that in any development, we go through a certain process in leasing space. If I can take a minute and tell you what we went through in the atrium and tell you where we are.
Why?
The, okay. The answer is that we have developed some contacts through, through our, our marketing efforts on the atrium. And we certainly make no commitment, but we, we are talking to several large users, both retail and office space. And we believe.
Did you begin before you had a major contract?
We started the atrium, which was 165,000 square feet with parking decks with no tenants. Yes, the answer to that is absolutely yes.
And with Michigan Avenue being a major traffic artery, would you consider doing any, any type of traffic study of getting traffic close to there and provide us with the information, the outcome of that before you?
Absolutely. Once, well before that, once, once an envelope or an overall magnitude of the project is agreed to by both parties and the citizens and the city and the developer, we would obviously complete traffic analysis, environmental impact statements, and, you know, share them with the planning department as a normal course of business. That, that's something that you do during your design process to make sure that your ingress egress is proper in the parking garages and that you're, you know, you're handling traffic correctly. So that would, that's a normal course of business.
One last question. Trying to look at an 18-story structure or a 10-story structure that I've seen you present, I don't, and I've seen what you did in Birmingham and I saw, you know, I saw what you did over there at the atrium, but I still don't have a feel for how you would blend that project in the environment that's adjacent to it and take advantage of the heritage and features in Dearborn in the project. I didn't feel that I saw that kind of treatment. Hey, here it was more just an abstraction. How would you do, what kind of, what would you do on an 18-story structure to blend into the environment and take advantage of some of the characteristics?
I mean, I can deal with that. First of all, if you have an 18-story structure, it's, it may be compatible and consistent in terms of materials and the articulation of things that are surrounding it, but it's, it's not going to totally blend. If you have an 18-story structure, you're going to, you're looking at a building that makes a statement that is compatible and, and it's compatible, but it obviously becomes a focal point. Maybe it's, it may be compatible in terms of materials. I mentioned limestone and brick. It may have, it may have bay windows and lines that work or sympathetic to the churches in the area and the buildings like the City Hall complex. It obviously is going to be taller and it's going to be a statement that is much different in terms of basic form. I think that the, the real assets are how much park do you have in terms of foreground, the horizontal lines of the other buildings. If it is an 18-story building, you're not going to see it forever because of the cutoff point of the two- and three-story buildings around it. And it's something that is going to be a center of things rather than, rather than just more of a sink. Now, whether, there are ways to minimize it if it becomes an 18-story building, we can push it back. The building could be built more in conjunction with a parking structure rather than confronting Michigan Avenue. The building can be shorter, the building could be split into two such, such towers to minimize the height. The housing could be more horizontal and longer. We don't want to make it smaller than that footprint. It's the smallest footprint that we consider. All of those things could be considered. As I've said, this is an illustration that maximizes the height and the intensity on that property. We feel that once they're working with, with you, we can, we can negotiate a solution that we, that we all feel comfortable with that will complement the area.
Thank you.
First of all, I got to commend the developer for sticking with your years before you start going to prepare the course. John's answered a lot of my questions, I have a few more. Would you be willing to work with the bank there, some of these existing structures to work with them as far as side programs or the whole project plans and the equipment there at this point?
Well, I think they have to be compatible. I don't think that blending means that they have to be the same. And you must be sensitive, especially in an urban setting, to the developments and buildings around you and be compatible. And the answer is, as it relates to that, yes, certainly.
My other concern was, you had mentioned some condos and then you had mentioned some apartments.
No, Dick mentioned the condos. Basically, our proposal has always been apartments. The, what we will build will be something that one could consider a home rather than a flat-out apartment. And so it's going to have all the amenities that, and this is separate from what Dick said, it was just sometimes the word condo and apartment are interchangeable, but these apartments, you know, I think have to be people's homes.
See, I personally like the idea of apartments because it brings young people in. 700, 800, there's a lot of people that can afford that amount to come into the city at one urban-type setting like this. What it'll do, it'll make them look for the, for the rest of the community, and they want to buy in Dearborn and stay in Dearborn, and eventually they can marry. Also, many retired people find that interesting, too.
If I could interrupt? I think I said condo because I haven't lived in such a building. It's very similar to Ann Arbor, it's called Sloan Plaza, and it's one of the buildings that was pasted on the, on your proposals when you were thinking of buying lands. The comments slipped with me, but I do live in such an environment, certainly appreciate it.
One more question. You had your dates between January 1st and completion date, you're going from January 1st '89 to July 1st '90. If this project was to go to, let's say, the middle of July to December '90, would you still be feasible, six months or eight months longer?
Development, especially development of this magnitude, is a function of the market and the economy. And all things being equal, the answer to that question is yes. But I don't think that I, I think I speak for myself and anyone else that would be doing the development. If there's an adverse economy, you are going to see whoever the developer would be, back off, slowed down, wait. And this type of development, which takes from the time you start construction, a full 18 months, there are a lot of risks inherent because no one can foresee 18 months out. But you certainly don't want to start something when the economy is down, you want to start it when it's moving out.
Do you see that a problem as, you know, if it's forecasted, this sort of whole hum here and falling here could be somewhat of any kind of downturn, do you feel this will affect the project?
I'm, I have been very bullish on this type of development. The, relative to our industry, so much of the vacancy is just a function of too many buildings being built.
You could work with maybe a seven or six story, you can spread up the density in different ways, you don't have a problem with that.
Well, you know, our, whatever development we do, part of what drives it is the market. And, and you'll find us backing off when we look at it and say, this isn't going to work in the market or we're not comfortable with it. We're here because we really believe in this area. We really like Dearborn and we really like this area. And part of doing this type of development is working together to get the best development to make, to create something special. And that really means working together, both with the, the city and the administration, the residences, the residents and the business community. And we're willing to commit the time and effort to do that. And I, you have to.
That's all I got. Thank you very much. Councilman Gerberi.
Thank you, Councilman Gerberi. Good morning, Mr. Brown.
Good morning.
I would first like you to state exactly how many stories a current proposal calls for, for your high-rise.
The current proposal is 18 stories maximum. 10, 18 for the residential and 10 for the office.
Okay, it was said during your presentation that it could possibly be cut down by building in the back perhaps or around, around the building to accommodate for the stories it would cut off if it were cut down to 10 stories. Just exactly what would a reconstruction of your proposal look like if it was decided that 18 stories was indeed too high?
Let me, we, this slide that we showed earlier, I think, addresses that. In the lower range of our proposal, where we assume a development of 70,000 square feet retail, 70 office and 100 apartments, who do in fact have a total development of 10 stories max, okay? That's in our lower range of the proposal. And the office, as I indicated with the retail, was a maximum of six stories. It was the residential that added the top four stories. Now, what was also indicated by Dick Black, and I think what you're referring to, is the question of, is there any other way to take the same density and reduce it? And the answer is yes. You can expand the footprints of both to some extent, and thereby if you expand the footprint, then the elevation or the height of each of these will shrink, okay? When you do those, you go through a trade-off, okay? These tall, the slender towers that were proposed, were proposed because we wanted to have maximum light, natural light in the office and the residential, okay? Because you have more units with, 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 with light. If you have a short, squatty office, you're going to have more interior space without natural light. So, you know, this is a matter of trade-off. There is a point where I'm not an architect and I never pretend to be, but I have found that if you do take a building and make it a short, squatty building of five or six stories and create a box, if you may, that can have more of a negative impact on your streetscape than having a lower base with two slender towers. The slender towers will allow more sunlight, they'll have less negative impact on your streetscape. So I think when you're going through a planning process, one should not just focus on height, one should focus on the total mass and the total density of the project as it relates to the streetscape.
Okay, I thought I heard you say that you would actually go back.
What Richard said is another alternative. I mean, there are many alternatives. One, you know, if one is concerned about the impact on Michigan Avenue, which is our, I assume what the discussion is, you know, one can reorient such towers to go toward the rear of the structure as opposed to facing right on Michigan. Thereby, if you may, and this is done in many municipalities, you know, you could kind of create, you know, step-down building with your main rightway being here. And there are a wide range of alternatives. I think the key decision that, that we as developers and architects require is for a consensus as to what kind of impact the city wants to see in West Dearborn. If the city is able to establish that, yeah, we think that we can agree with impact of 175,000 square feet of retail office and we want to see 100 residential units, we and our architects can come back with a half a dozen or a dozen alternatives which can accommodate different heights and variations of social.
Well, Ed, I know most of our senior citizen homes in the area do not exceed 10 to 11 stories. So 18 stories is a bit high. My next question is, does this proposal account for the available space that exists right now on Ant Block? In other words, there are some properties still existing on the block, and I'm wondering if you have any plans of purchasing those properties?
This proposal addresses the 80,000 square feet specified in the RFP. And no more, we're not assuming by, if you're talking about purchasing, the, the bank and the Chinese restaurant, that's not assuming that you're strictly 100% the 80,000 square foot person.
Okay, now, one last question, referring to previous projects you have accomplished, such as in Birmingham. Have you ever, in the middle of construction or at any time, sold the project to another developer?
No.
You've always kept it throughout the building process?
That's right.
Okay. And you have, do you still own those projects today or have you sold any of them?
I think of the, of the major projects that we've developed over the last seven or eight years or been a part of, we may be sold one or two.
Have you or do you anticipate using any federal funds for this project in Dearborn?
As it, as it relates to UKAG? No, we have not found.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me? I believe our hour is approached here.
Wait a minute. This is mine meeting, not yours. I haven't even got my chance to ask my few questions.
I was saying, I realize that.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, if we can get out of here and I think that I have two questions, if I may ask them, and I think Councilman Germany has one minute. Take a five-minute recess for everybody else to get set up for the new program. Anyway, my two questions is, you mentioned that 18... Anyway, my two questions is, you mentioned that two million dollars would be paid back to the city. How would this two million dollars compare for the city or the property? In your presentation, you mentioned that two million, felt that two million dollars could be paid back.
The amount of dollars is really based on, and is a function, because the value of any property is a function of what you develop on it. And the money would be paid back based on what we were able to develop on the property. And it would come through, you know, either equity or financing.
What time, Mr. Brown, would it be paid back? At the time you complete the project, five years later?
I think that that's a negotiable item.
But you feel, if you got the project, you'd be willing to put up two million dollars?
Sure.
To pay for the property? The other question to you is, and of course, we speak to Salisbury School Site and how successful it was and how pleased we've been with it. Of course, that was my, I'm not a fourteen graduate like most of the people I'm just telling you about here. I think, you know, that that project, so much, you kept it so much to look like the area. And you being in this location, I was totally shocked when your proposal came through with an eighteen-story building and a ten-story building. Because I think that through all the newspaper articles and through all the kinds of things that were said, at one time, we had somebody come in and put a bunch of buildings and set them on the table.
Right.
High-rise here, high-rise there. And no one in the administration, no one in the council, no one at all liked it at all. And now you come back to us and you bring us in an eighteen-story building to look at. And now you're telling me today, well, I can do a ten-story or an eight-story building. Why didn't you originally come in with what we wanted to see, so we'd have felt more comfortable?
Well, let me say that...
And I'll ask the same to all of you.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not just you because everyone's the same.
If the development were on the other side of Michigan Avenue, I would have, you would not have seen the height. But considering exactly the location of the development and taking into consideration, and I've spent a lot of time and listened and walked the area, and the focal point that you're trying, that should be created there, I didn't see anything wrong, nor do I today with an eighteen-story project. I don't believe that a project across Michigan Avenue should be anywhere near eighteen stories or even ten stories. And I think as you get, you know, that you build like this, when you, because you are going into the park and into residential, and you should, and you should change it. But in that particular location, a high-rise, there's nothing wrong with a high-rise development.
But doesn't that take away from, we speak, the project be tied in with Jacobson's, where the apartments would flow into Jacobson? And Jacobson's is so much of a lower thing, doesn't that kind of take away from the Jacobson's thing by the big mass?
I can only tell you...
I'm not, I don't know because I'm not a developer and I mean, you're much more successful.
A lot of it is, a lot of it is personal preference. But I can tell you that in some of the cities that I've gone to, Chicago, New York, Kansas City, as an example, there is a combination of high-rise, low-rise, mid-rise, parks, that just works wonderfully together. And you've got to have the right combination. But I think it's important, in this particular location on the super block, to make a statement. And you're making a statement to everyone. This is a special area. This is, this, you just want to create this environment to bring other people in and be a focal point. Ford Motors doing it, Ford Land all up and down Southfield.
Yeah, it's a different area. It's all...
Right.
I mean, if you want to, if you want to ask personally, do I think those buildings are beautiful they have? They're straight up and down buildings. They got windows on every side of the thing. It's not your style of building. You wouldn't build anything like that. Anyway, I want to cut the video because I want to be fair to everybody else. So, Councilman Germany has one more question.
I think it's a good question here in terms of what we need, what we need left to, in terms of developing the architectural treatment, the mix, density mix, the traffic study, putting the finance together. I mean, just for the sake of discussion, if we were to select you on Monday to work with us on putting a thing, a package together, how long do you think all of this would take before the construction phase began?
I believe that the first thing that has to be achieved, and most important, is a unity between all the groups to come together.
How long is that unity going to take?
I, you know, I see, I see... I have to satisfy, I think part of what I've got to do is satisfy you. And I have to...
The ballpark, you're assuming that the group doesn't cave in?
I think Andy's schedule is a good schedule. I think it's going to take four months at least to come to an agreement as to the type of development and the scope of the development, because it involves the council, the mayor, the citizens, the retail. And I think they should all be, it's important that everybody be behind whatever is developed on this site.
The architectural drawings, the traffic study, and everything done within four months.
No, I'm saying that just for us to agree on the type of thing that should be developed, the schedule, which, do you have that schedule?
You know, we broke it down, Councilman, you know, into specific phases. When I say negotiate development agreement, I mean just what you're saying. You know, if there is unanimity on everybody's side and a desire to work together, we have looked at so many alternatives and their economic feasibility or lack of, both architecturally and economically, that we believe that in a two-month process from March one, okay, not from Monday, but from March one, that that is definitely doable, okay? And at that time, one would end up with conceptual schematic drawings in terms of heights, facades, and everything else. So that gives you about four months from now. The next step would be to develop detailed engineering plans and additional design development architectural drawings, which could take another month and a half or so before they're submitted to the city for final approval. But I, you know, I believe that, you know, it's a question as what Tony indicated. The key here is that there's unity with everyone and working toward the same goal.
Okay, I just want, no, you're answering my question right there, by the way. That's pretty much what I wanted to see.
Obviously, this can be pushed up a little bit if there's less of a problem with the, with the... I think the key, the key points are these. I think once we get through the top two points, I think the rest is pretty much what I would define as more like...
Any construction started until the first quarter of eighty-nine?
That's the latest, you know, I, we believe that that can definitely be maintained if we meet that day.
I'm saying that under optimum circumstances, first quarter of eighty-nine.
We feel very comfortable with that schedule. Thank you.
Okay. The mayor has a couple of questions. I just have a question for Mr. Brown. Do you envision developing a partnership with the city in terms of this project? Or you, what would the city's involvement be, other than with a parking structure?
I, I think that there's a natural partnership, but I don't, I don't envision any formal partnership of any time, of any type in ownership or participation.
If we were to do a parking structure project for this and did it through a revenue bond source, what type of revenue stream would your building maintain? Or would there be an adequate revenue stream from the project to help retire those bonds?
We did that analysis, Mayor, and it was assumed that there were two revenues that would go to recover, retire the bonds. One revenue obviously came from the revenues generated from the people using the development, whether it be the employees in retail or office space or the customers to the retail. And secondly, using tip of funds, okay, for the extra dollars of value created in this development. And in our pro forma projections, it does show that the combination of those two sources of revenue adequately cover the retirement of the bond.
Didn't you say sometime during the thing, forty-five dollars a month?
That was an assumption in the marketing report, which we basically used, yes, sir. Which would, you know, for an example, office employees.
Office employees.
Retail employees.
Retail employees.
No, monthly permits.
Right. Then you would pay the city forty-five dollars a month or for...
And private, you say, sir.
Not for all the parking?
No.
Just for the amount needed for those, for the office?
They're going to have, they, their thing, oh, yeah, but they were going to have underground parking for some of their apartments.
That's correct.
Two hundred fifty for your apartment, she'd have underground parking. So really, the only parking places you wouldn't be spending for is the people who would be going to...
To repair it.
To retail.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very kindly.
Good morning. My name's Kevin Burnus. I'm a longtime West Dearborn resident and a local attorney here in town. I became aware of the Super Block project a little over a year ago at a neighborhood Christmas party. And as a Dearborn resident and a neighbor of the Super Block project, I was very concerned about exactly what proposal would be the right project for this area, both in terms of preserving Dearborn's heritage as well as promoting a future economic development and redevelopment of the West Dearborn area. Through discussions with other attorneys in my office, we identified a developer, Farbenstein and Company, as the developer that we thought was the most able to put a successful project on this site, both in terms of the design project, the development of the project, the leasing and management of the project, and creating something that would be successful and will... Through all stages of development. Of the feasibility and how we were going to build a successful project and preserve the heritage of Dearborn, and what would be acceptable to the Dearborn residents and the Dearborn council and the administrative staff of the city of Dearborn. We also engaged the services of a local Dearborn business contractor, Mr. Rick Mara, who's been a longtime resident and a local contractor in the area, to assist us in telling us what he thought would be the appropriate feasibility or the appropriate project for this particular development. What type of architectural design would be acceptable in Dearborn, the height and the density and such other matters. At this time, I'm very pleased to introduce to you Mr. Bert Farben, who is president of the Farbenstein Development Company. He will introduce some of the other members of our staff.
Hi. My name is Bert Farben, and I'm the president of the Farbenstein Company. Our company is a full-service real estate organization, which specializes in the marketing of office buildings, shopping centers, industrial facilities, as well as apartments, and the, all, pretty much all income-producing properties. We also have a management company, which manages the same types of real estate. Our present portfolio of operation, some we own and some we manage for institutional investors, ranges to be about approximately eight million square feet in the Detroit metropolitan area. Our staff is approximately a hundred and thirty people, which deal in all those various areas. Our company, as a development company, has been involved in all phases and all types of development. We are literally developed through the whole metropolitan Detroit area. And we also have ventured out into Florida as well, into some of our developments there. But primarily in the Detroit area, we have specialized in office buildings, shopping centers, some apartment development, and as well as offices. Recently, we have been involved in a project in downtown Detroit. I'm sure many of you have read about it and have heard about it. It's the old county building. It's a building that was built and started in eighteen ninety-eight and was finished in nineteen oh two. And we were involved as the, as the development team to redevelop that project. It was approximately a forty million dollar development. And our job was to purchase the building from Wayne County, and then to take the building and develop it into a, into a building that would be used for the county offices and be finished by the end of this last year, nineteen eighty-seven. We were successful in completing the building in November of nineteen eighty-seven. The county moved in on November twenty-third, and they are presently, I hope happily, occupying the building at the present time. The reason I bring that building up is for two reasons. Number one, it was in a community of Detroit, downtown Detroit, in urban development. Number two, it was a development that was basically in conjunction with a public and private group, us being the private group, Wayne County being the public group. And thirdly, the team that we have put together for this project is the same team. The general contractor on that job was Walbridge Aldinger, also a local company. And Rick Haller, the executive vice president of that company, is here. And I'd like him to possibly say a few words about the company, so you'll be introduced to Walbridge Aldinger.
Thank you, Bert. My role here this morning is to introduce you briefly to Walbridge Aldinger Company. Walbridge Aldinger is a general contractor, construction manager. We're number eighteenth in the United States of the top four hundred contractors. And that rating is developed annually by the Engineering News Record. And we're also a member of a prestigious club called the Billion Dollar Club, which is a club whose members are made up of those companies who news, whose new awards in a particular year exceed one billion dollars. We've been, we were founded in the Detroit area in nineteen sixteen by the namesakes of the company, who incidentally are no longer involved in the company. But we've been involved in some major landmarks within the southeastern Michigan area, the Selfridge Air Force Base, Orchestra Hall. We've even outlived some of our projects in the case of Olympia. But most, as we grew in size, we also grew in, also in our abilities and capabilities. We currently have operations throughout North America. We have an office, through our Livonia office in Livonia, Michigan, we pretty much handle all of the continental United States, from the west coast to the east coast. And through our office in Mexico City and in London, Ontario, we meet the needs of our US-based customers within those countries. One of the things I think that's important is the experience that we can bring to the table in terms of construction on a project like this, mixed-use project. In the past ten years, Walbridge Aldinger and its subsidiaries have constructed over four thousand apartment, hotel, and condominium units. In nineteen eighty-seven, we completed seven hundred thousand square feet of retail space in three projects, the Novi Town Center, Oakland Point, and one here locally in Dearborn, Fairlane Meadows. Another aspect I think that's important in terms of our experience as a contractor in a particular type of construction is also our experience working within the city of Dearborn in this locale. Our experience within Dearborn spans forty years. It's over a hundred projects. Some of them, just to name a few, are the triple-A building, work at Oakwood Hospital. We're just completing work at Henry Ford Fairlane. Last night, I took the time to convert those hundred projects into nineteen eighty-eight dollars. And the total construction value in nineteen eighty-eight dollars of those hundred projects exceeds three billion dollars. So we understand, we've been a part of Dearborn for a lot, for many years. I think another aspect of understanding and success on a project like this is our experience with the other team members. With Smith, Henchman, and Grills, the architectural firm member of this development team, Walbridge Aldinger's background has gone back, they were founded even before our company was founded. But in the past seven years, we worked together on five projects that exceed a hundred and seventy million dollars. The University of Michigan, Electrical Engineering Building, work at the Detroit Free Press, and the focus of this development team, the old Wayne County building. We were, that brought all three of us together. And I think there's distinct advantage in that, in that it, the learning curve. We understand the expectations of each member of the group. And we all, and through that, we can be successful and really constrict and reduce the time it takes to bring the super block online. I'm very pleased to be a part of this development team, and I pledge the resources of Walbridge Aldinger to bring the Super Block to a successful reality. Thank you. Another reason why we brought the general contractor here today is that we have found in our past experience that when we have a general contractor and the architect right from the beginning of a job, we can maximize the potential of the site, maximize the potential of the development, and not have to do a, first do a, an architectural, then bring a general contractor in, then make changes, which happens so often in development. We're able to kind of take that...
We're able to kind of take that step and, and create it into one step. Our architect on this job is Smith Henchman and Grills, and here today, we have Arnold Mycon, who is the treasurer of Smith Henchman and Grills, and he'd like to kind of just explain his company.
I'd like to just take a few minutes and give you an overview of Smith Henchman and Grills. First of all, we're pleased to be part of this development team, to again work with Farbenstein, and to again work with Walbridge Aldinger, particularly coming off the project that we did for the new Wayne County Executive Offices, which is a project, as Bert mentioned, that was both on time and on budget. We are the oldest continuous architectural engineering practice in the country. This year, we'll be celebrating our hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary. And we are one of the top ten largest AE firms in the United States. We're headquartered in Detroit, where most of our four hundred and fifty employees are. Our roots in, in this area certainly go back, as we've done, the bulk of our work over the course of at least this century has been with Board, General Motors, and the Chrysler Corporation. We've also done a number of buildings in downtown Detroit, most notably, the Penobscot Building, the Guardian Building, and our own headquarters. Assisting us in this project will be our sister company, Johnson Johnson and Roy, who are leading landscape architects and urban designers. They're going to be part of our team to assure that this project takes in all of the necessary inputs of, of urban design and planning, to try to accomplish all of the goals of the community, to have, to assure that they come off and become a stimulus for further development. Just in brief summary, we have the knowledge, we have the experience, and we have the resources to bring forth a project here that meets all of the community needs. Making the presentation for us today will be Mike Tomasek, who will be our lead architect on this project. Mike is a Dearborn native and is, currently resides in Dearborn, where he's active, has been active in the Planning Commission and Historic Renovation. Most of his twenty years of professional experience have been involved in the development arena.
When Ernie said Dearborn, he meant to say Birmingham, which is, I am a Dearborn native, but I am currently active in Birmingham. I'm sure some of you would have realized that. Couple days ago, when I was preparing for this talk, I, I recalled something that somebody told me, was that if, if you, if you put up some boards like this and you stand up in front of a group of people, you ought to have one of those antennas to point, otherwise no one will believe you. And I, I researched that at the library and found out that it wasn't true. And so, I, since I, since I would have had to borrow one, I was happy to find that out. But what I'd like to tell you today is what we did to come up with this project, what objectives we identified that we thought were community objectives, and also developer objectives, what, what the project represents in terms of our ideas for the site, and then finally, how we think those, that project implements the objectives. What we did was, we went around, we took some good, hard looks at the site, walked up and down the street. We had our landscape and planning firm, Johnson Johnson and Roy, with us, and had an opportunity to take some pictures, get familiar with the site. We toured many of the adjacent buildings, I had a chance to go through Jacobson's and some of the other buildings, get a feel for how they operated, and how they related to the streets and the neighborhood around, as well as some of the buildings in, in the surrounding community. We also examined the program that the city provided us, in, in the form of the RFP. That'd be quite useful and helpful. And we obtained generally-based information from the city, in terms of maps and so on. And then we came back to our office, and we talked, and we talked, and we talked, and we talked. And we were fortunate enough to have some Dearborn people also in our office, the size that it is, some people that work in our office, live in Dearborn, or have lived in Dearborn. So we took advantage of some of their knowledge, and that was our way of kind of getting into the minds of some of the people that live in the community. And then we produced a whole bunch of schemes that, that came from our, our hearts and our stomachs, I guess, as far as what we felt this site could, could, could be implemented on this site. And we got together with the development team, Farbenstein and Contractor, and we, we took a look at those, and then we decided to ferret out the objectives and compare them to some of the initial schemes that we came up with. I'd like to just mention some of the objectives that, that we identified. We felt that the project must be economically feasible, be designed to be, and must respond to the nature of the project that the city has identified, and that it is a catalyst project. We think that there are some implications there that are very important. Has to, the second thing is it has to respond to the space needs of the community. And third would be a pleasing environment for the users and the city. Fourth, visual relief on Michigan Avenue, we felt that was very important. Fifth, respond to traffic, pedestrian, and vehicular. And sixth, style that is compatible with architectural heritage of the community. So those are six things. We brainstormed, so, so out of, out of this initial meeting came one sort of direction that, that was identified, and that was essentially an apartment project with some retail. And we were able to then take that information, brainstorm again with our team, and we were able to come up with a single proposal that we felt had some merit, that was worth studying some further, is which we did. And I'd like to just chat with you a little bit about that scheme, if I could, which is the one that was, which was the one that was drawn in the book. First of all, there's a residential structure that is proposed right in this area, that is about nine stories high, two hundred and four units of multiple, multiple family housing. And on the ground floor, underneath that residential structure, if you will, is a retail shopping street, or shopping environment. And then required to meet the parking requirements would be a six-hundred-car parking deck. So the, the, the elements of the proposal are less than what was in the planning study, but are, are fairly simple. And then we have a very straightforward, one-story retail complex with, with multiple family housing and parking in, in the back. We were talking about six, approximately sixty-one-bedroom apartments, a hundred and twenty-two bedroom apartments, and twenty-four three-bedroom apartments, and about sixty, sixty thousand of net rentable office space. I'm sorry, it's an office, retail space. Now, getting back to the goals of the project, and how, and how this project satisfies those goals, demonstrates them. I guess the first thing, perhaps a little further discussion of what the project is and the site plan right there. When we looked at Michigan Avenue, the, the first thing that we felt was that, that it's not really a very good shopping environment right on Michigan Avenue, the, the intensity of the traffic is, is quite, quite severe. And so we felt that one of the important things would be, in order to, to create a good shopping environment, would be to bring the shoppers off Michigan Avenue into a more pleasant environment. So we essentially created a interior shopping street, if you will, that leads from the corners of the block, and gently and in an arc swings through the middle of the block, back to each corner. And that, it reflects existing or previous shopping patterns, in the sense that it's corner to corner, but takes advantage of the fact, or, or the dis, it takes advantage of the fact that current retail configurations no longer really can tolerate the depth that's, that are in this block, so that any, any retail proposal on this block pretty much has to develop shorter depths. So we had an advantage of maintaining existing circulation notions, better retail depths, and a nicer shopping street or shopping avenue. Another thing that we, we noticed was that Michigan Avenue was the high-disability area of, of the block, which is very advantageous to develop, to realist, to, to store owners. And yet, Jacobson's has used the Newman Street as their front door, even though it is, originally was designed as the back door. And much the same is happening, has happened along Michigan Avenue. So we felt the necessity to develop essentially a project with two front doors. We feel that's very important, two front doors. The first front door is a symbolic front door, or a visual front door, so that the people on Michigan Avenue, as they're driving by, pedestrians and various places, there is a recess notch that clearly expresses the entry notion, but it isn't really intended. That also allows for some space history, building, building to the public, to the public, so that there is, there is a sort of law, that totally, and private points on the office, and opportunity to, to, to private point above, works very nicely, fortunately, with, with the same curve. Reports, a series of apartment units, which have slightly different views, which is kind of interesting, given that it's in curve. And it also gives one a very interesting, I guess, non-straightforward visual image of the building on the outside, in the sense that it isn't just a slab or a straight block. It's impressive, I guess, kind of important, helps to create a focal point. I have a model up here, which I haven't sent you from the block, can't pass that around, but in some ways, it demonstrates that there's a little difference with the drawings, and everybody, at some point, there's some questions we could probably do to ask, to be interested. So this apartment block is impressive, which, which creates a focal point in this area of Michigan Avenue, and provides good views, good light, and interesting living environment inside, as far as the shape, as well as an interesting object and a thing to look at from the outside. And it's connected to the parking deck with an enclosed bridge, so that apartment or the housing dwellers may access in a covered way if they choose. One of the aspects of this, this retail street, with the apartment portion of, the housing portion of the project a little higher, it offers some opportunities for us to introduce some, some lighting in here, some skylights, so that this interior street, by the way, what you're looking at here is kind of a section, if one were to take a knife and remove part of this and look in that way. You'd have a view of the shopping street with the store facades, and the apartment, the housing portion above, and some opportunities for some skylights to, so that this, this, this interior shopping street becomes more outdoors than purely an exterior wall. The object here is to bring some of the outdoors in. Okay, hopefully that gives you a little flavor for the project. We also, this is probably just a scene, left it out here. One of the things architects never really like to do is, is to say exactly what something's gonna look like, because it's so hard to, to portray that at this point in the game. But I think we were successful on this drawing in, in depicting a character that, that involves traditional references to architectural elements that should be familiar to everyone in the community, although it isn't a particular style that is necessarily in the community. There are elements that are, that are drawn from the various kinds of styles and expressions that are in the community. And as you see, it's largely a brick structure with limestone-like accents and gable roofs, things that relate very much to residential structure, construction, and they're very popular around the country in terms of, of multiple family housing. The lower block right here is a, indicates a, a shopping environment, and again, we're trying to, as I described with the entrance, we're trying to have a symbolic front and an actual front of the building, in the sense that the facade of the shopping on Michigan Avenue would be developed with shop windows, possibly some warnings, whichever one is shown, landscaping, so that visually, there'd be a sense of excitement and action, rather than just the blank wall. And yet, the, the entrance, the real entrance is on the south side, so we have, besides the symbolic entrance, we have a symbolic front and an actual front. We think it's, we think it's absolutely critical to this site, that that concept be, be dealt with in a responsible way. Hopefully, that's given you a flavor for the project. Back to the goals, the economic, the soundness, the catalytic nature, I think that one of the things that we looked at, in terms of how we feel this project does that, is that much like when you have a big Christmas dinner in front of you or something like that, your plate's totally filled up with things and you're looking forward to eating that dinner, but you, you have to take one thing first, or two things. And we feel that this site, in order to be, in order that the downtown project be successfully completed, like the Christmas dinner, that this site has to represent the first two or three things that are, that are done. So that rather than following the planning study with a whole series of uses, we, we selected the uses that were, had the highest probability of success in this area. And so that, we're presenting a project that, that, that is, has a very high probability of success, we feel that's important, has a good opportunity to get started fast and get completed fast, which we think is important. And furthermore, we think it's the right scale. It's not too big to be imposing, and it's not too small to have no, no impact whatsoever.
I can interrupt for one minute, just to emphasize, one of the things that we were trying to accomplish in designing this program was to let the person who's traveling eastbound, or I guess this would be westbound, from east to west on Michigan Avenue, get the visual impression that they are approaching the downtown retail area. So we have setbacks on our, go back to the drawing. When you're approaching the mall, coming down this Michigan Avenue, you know you have reached a downtown area, we've got window storefronts in this area that's very visual. It's part of the reason that we have decided to take over the whole block. We felt that that was critical to the success of this project. And with this development team, we're not simply looking to develop this block and walk away, we're looking to do whatever it takes to make this a successful project that people of Dearborn would want to come and shop here, would want to come to live here, and would be proud of. So we felt it was necessary- But as we see Michigan Avenue now, there isn't very much storefrontage. Most people are using the rear entrances, and there's a lot of traffic that just seems to whiz right by. With the crescent shape from a living standpoint, we have backed off of Michigan Avenue as much as we can, the residential housing and the living in the area, which, as Mike already pointed out, gives you a very unique experience in terms of your view. Any particular apartment in this crescent shape would have a different view than some of the others, but we have backed off a little bit. So it gives you, you're a little less away from the traffic, a little less away from the noise. Also, in regard to the commercial, a couple of months ago, we had a meeting with Jacobson's, and we felt that in order for this commercial to be successful, we wanted to make certain that we would be working in conjunction with Jacobson's. And so we had a meeting with Mr. Rosenfeld, the president of Jacobson's, and we discussed our concept, and we feel that, number one, he would be very happy to see the development which we have planned, and number two, he would be very interested in working with us to be part of it, in the sense of connecting the two developments together.
No, I think, I just wanted to emphasize the character of the project. We've done a windshield survey and also gone over our own collective memories of the community and identified elements of the project that we think are compatible with architectural styles of the community. And we're very pleased with the project, the images that are being shown here, and hope that there's something that's receptive to the community here as well. Just like to summarize, to say that we collected information from the community and the city. And we tried very hard to identify the goals, as I stated, and we think we've designed a project that meets those goals in a realistic way and has an excellent chance of being successful from everyone's point of view. And we're extraordinarily enthused as a company to be working with Mr. Farman again and certainly on this project. Thank you.
I'd like to mention a few more things before I open it up for questions. What we decided to do here is to create a one-story commercial. Now, there have been attempts in various communities to try to go above one story on the commercial development, and we have found that it's very difficult for a retailer to be able to make his business work above the first floor, because you're taking away from him not only his identity from the street, but you're also taking away the possibility of drawing people to him. So unless you have a major tenant working up to a second and third level, it's very difficult to feel that a commercial space would work above the first floor. So we've created a one-story commercial development and a nine-story apartment development. The total development, as stated in our book, is approximately $24 million. We have had initial discussions with a couple of financial institutions. I noticed that you're looking at those books. There's, in the audience and here in the front of the room, I have taken the liberty to put together a little picture brochure of the county building and its completion. And I also, there are a few copies of the Detroit Monthly magazine, which has the article of the building and the development team in there for your perusal as we're discussing this. As I was saying, though, it's about a $24 million development. What we're asking the community to do is to put in a parking facility which holds approximately 600 cars. The cost is approximately $3,600,000. And in the brochure, or in the original presentation, we feel that as we sit down, if we are chosen to be the developer in our negotiations with the city, we plan on doing this as a joint venture with the community, in the sense that they would be a part owner. Now, that can be done in several ways. We don't suggest that the city come in and be a joint venture general partner where there is exposure. We realize as developers and entrepreneurs, that's our responsibility. The community would take a position, either by a land lease subordinated to us, and then they would get an upside on some basis, to be able to get their money, get the dollars that have been expended on the land, as well as on the parking facility, paid back to them in that manner. And I think possibly, knowing, anticipating what had happened in the last group, maybe the thing to do is to open it up for questions and give it enough time to ask this question so we can answer them.
Okay, that's one perspective. I have two or three questions for our little room, one of the colleagues. First of all, would it be economically feasible to go with under 10 stories, like seven or six, or 10 stories over there, five?
Our plan is to do a first-class development. And to do a first-class development, you have to create first-class amenities for your occupant. In order for that to work, you need a certain amount of occupants to make it feasible. We feel that this development is the right size. We feel that 10 stories gives us the architectural ability to plan the site in a way where you have certain green belts and certain landscaping for the initial view of the building as you come to it. And number two, it gives us the amount of tenants that will allow us the income to be able to give them the amenities that are necessary to make it first class.
So you feel would not be, that's if people go with, with higher 10 stories?
I don't believe so. I feel that this is the size that we feel would be proper for the development as well as for the community.
Okay, other question is, you take into account buying the bank and the Chinese restaurant. What if, by some reason, you cannot acquire those buildings? Then what do you have a plan B?
We've talked to the architects about that. Our plan is to purchase the rest of the block. And we've had initial discussions with manufactured bank, one of the owners of one of the buildings, and they have shown an interest in selling their property and coming in as part of the development. We have done it. If by chance, we are not able to purchase the property, if it's not economically feasible, or if for whatever reason we're unable to do it, there is an alternative that we can, we could redo the concept and develop the property with the 80,000 square feet that's presently owned by the city. However, we really feel, for the community's point of view and for the ability of using this development as a catalyst to future development in this area, that it's necessary to put your best foot forward, and we feel that happens by the whole block.
Okay, I asked this question earlier, again, knowing where our economy is at this point, where it's projected to be next year. How do you see this project, the economics effectiveness project, will be delayed? Also, when do you see a feasibility to, a feasible startup date, maybe completion date?
Your question is if it's delayed, if the project were to be delayed to some time in the future? Well, I think that the logical answer to that is that, right now, we feel the development's feasible, and we feel that we should move forward. We're excited about the idea of doing this. We feel that the community, it's the right time for the community, the input we have gotten from the local people, they're anxious for a development such as this, and so that now would be a good time to proceed. However, if it were delayed, we certainly would be interested in being looked upon as a future developer.
Okay. Do, when would you see a startup date in the project? When is your goal?
Well, if we were able to sign an agreement with the community within the next few weeks or month or so, we feel that the pre-construction period will take approximately six months. And then once we, once that's completed, we feel construction would take about 18 months. So it's about a 24-month process.
So we're still looking about the first next year, how we can start it?
Probably sometime the latter part of '88.
Okay. You have addressed the traffic study? Or do you feel that once, you know, you would have to, this would be important?
It would be part of, it would be part of the development process.
Okay. As far as the structure, the parking structure, you do see that the city getting paid back to that, or what type of, you know, can you be more specific as the joint venture that you, you know, I'd like, my goal would be just to, you know, somehow works the property sold and you get it developed, if no city ties with it. How do you see that joint venture to get our money back?
Well, I think the city has felt, obviously, when you purchased the property, that you wanted this property to be used as a catalyst toward future development.
Right.
And that was an investment the city took.
Right.
For us as developers, it's obviously very important for us to be, not only to address the needs to the community, because without that you wouldn't have a development, but it's also important to make sure that it's financially feasible. And there will, in our proposal, we feel that there would be some ongoing cooperation financially with the community. And what I mean by that is, that we feel there would be a payback to the community and the dollars that they have spent, but it will take some time to pay it back. Now, we feel that when there's risk, there should be reward, and the community has taken a risk, and so the reward that we suggest by, on a joint venture, which I said a moment ago, would not be additional financial risk by the community, but they would reap benefit as we reap benefit as a developer.
And what about the parking structure?
Well, the parking structure would be, we would have to evaluate how the parking structure would be financed. But TIFA is certainly one approach that the development that we propose will create, obviously, substantial dollars in tax revenues, and those dollars certainly could be used to help pay that, those dollars back to the community.
Okay. Another question I had before, are they going to be, they look like apartments, or are you going to be looking at condos or strictly apartments?
Our program is an apartment development. However, it'll be done in a way, apartments and condominiums, you know, one's sold, one's rented, and it basically would be the same development, but our plan right now is apartment development.
One more quick question. As I look at that building, this is the way I see it, I see like a, oh, maybe a hallway running through the side of the building where the light would shine in, and then maybe the apartments could look into the hallway and also out toward the outside, and then the business people would have, be looking into that hallway too. Is that correct?
No, not terribly. The apartments, the apartments are really quite separate from this shopping street. This is something that's really hard to portray.
Is that a glass, I mean, does that light bring to the whole project?
This is not necessarily continuous glass, but there would be some glass up there. And the apartments would all occur above that point, so that the only views into the shopping would be from the shopping area, and perhaps an upper-level lobby, a higher lobby of the apartment building would look into there. So the purpose of this glass is largely just to allow light to get into the shopping area and create that kind of ambiance. The views out of the apartments would be directly in this manner. We've done that for a couple of reasons. I guess the primary one is you have to get the apartments slightly up above the roof, so that that first-level apartments aren't just looking across the roof, which no one can make attractive, so we're getting it up there.
I guess that would be a hard time. I see that on that, just drawing those across the top. I see that blue strip going through, what is that?
That would be the apartment corridor or apartment block circulation area. And then this would be just a lobby area.
Okay. Thank you.
That's one another.
Thank you. Obviously, your proposal is con-